Tyler, can I sit here?
Is everybody else on, Cassie? Sir, is this your seat?
Keeping me on my toes there. Don't they? Cleaning your robes, you say now? Have a green light.
Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call the May 21st, 2018 St. Joseph's School District Board of Education Meeting to Order tonight. Dr. Newhart is gonna call the roll.
Until Cassie is appointed Secretary with Donna being gone. Luke?
Here.
Larry?
Here.
Brian is participating by phone but will not be able to vote tonight. Cappy?
Here.
Lori?
Here.
Tammy?
Here.
Seth?
Here.
Everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the midst of all, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1.4, I will now read the Board norms. The members of the St. Joseph's School Board will: prepare for board meetings, listen to understand, engage in purposeful discussion, collaborate respectfully, make evidence-based decisions, and demonstrate professional and ethical governance. Now, item 1.5, we need to appoint Cassie Holmes as temporary Board Secretary.
Can I make a motion that we appoint Cassie as our temporary Board Secretary?
Second.
A motion and a second, hearing no discussion. Think we can all vote electronically. Motion carries 6-0. All right, item 2.0, recognitions. This is exciting. We've got a lot of good things to come tonight.
We have Ryan Stobal first, if you'd come up to the podium, and Seth, if you'd come out front, center. Like to recognize some students tonight.
All right, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, Superintendent Newhart, I have with me Tori Tolan and Tyler Dorsey. Sorry. They're a computer and TSA state contest in May in the category of computer integrated manufacturing. This is a newer area. For three years, it's been available, all three years, we have won this division at state. Nobody else has had it in the state but us. Their project was the Bluetooth headset device out there. The category said we had to develop a device under $5 that could be used as a, oh, a promotional gift or whatever. All paperwork had to support how we did it, receipts had to support what we spent. Very tedious, time-consuming, year-long project, developing, redeveloping, tearing down. These two did a fabulous job with it, represented the district well down there.
Next up, we have Lafayette High School.
Was you?
Yeah. My name's Brad Gerard. I am the Project Lead the Way teacher at Lafayette High School. So, this year, same competition, we took a group for an animatronics project. So, animatronics is robotics. So, the students worked hard to develop a person to show off some animals. So, this year's theme was a robot for a zoo or an aquarium. They chose to do a zookeeper, and then we have a couple of animals that they, the zookeeper would then talk about the animals, and the animals would move in response. So, they worked pretty hard on encoding, revising, and they did a good job. So, Derek Thomas, Brent Thompson, Riley Moore, Dylan Hamm, and Jace Garcia was not able to make it here tonight.
Are these students seniors?
How many of you guys are seniors?
I was just wondering, is... How old are the kids? Are they like juniors, seniors, sophomores? Sophomores?
All of those guys?
These sophomores and two freshmen.
Wow. So, we have many years to come.
How can you do better than first and then next?
And then Benton High School.
Hello, I'm Bob Langner from Benton High School, the Project Lead the Way teacher. My students, Montana Taylor and Ashton Pilgrim, did an architectural design using two shipping containers to build a tiny house. This is her third year, and she got first place this year, and she's done quite well the last couple of years. And she's a junior, so she'll do it next year, too.
Yay. I look forward to seeing you a year from now.
And then also tonight, we have Lafayette's baseball team. We'd like to recognize them and their district championship, and we play tomorrow night against Excelsior Springs.
Yes, sir.
Larry, you've got this one.
Oh. Jason, come on up. Jason Hale's the coach. And Jason, congratulations, a good job. Boys, you ought to come on up here, too, and get... Yes. Braden Luke, our freshman, who's been one of our pitchers, done excellent job. And also, he hit the home run this year in the championship. Jackson Gregory, a senior, hit the home run in the first game this year, wasn't he, Jackson?
Uh, third game.
Third game. I never was good at math. Cole Slabowski, the shortstop, did an excellent job.
Best hands in the country.
Leo Badhook. Zach Leader, Zach was our pitcher only, came in at the end of the game and saved several games for us. Dane Cook, he's a freshman, one of our standardized catchers. What can I say about Dane? Tyson Coke, who is the varsity catcher. And Tyler Arrowwood. Tyler pitched a no-hitter in championship game. He's the pitcher, and Tyson is the catcher, and they work well together because when Tyson squats down to catch and Tyler's up on the mound pitching, they're at the same height. Congratulations.
We have no audience participation, so we're gonna move on to Agenda Item 4.0 and 4.1, approval of the agenda.
I'd make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second, hearing no discussion, we can vote. Motion carries 6-0. I'm just gonna let our students know, you guys are welcome to stay, but if you guys want to leave, you're welcome to do that as well.
Congratulations.
I figured that might be the case. All right, item 5.0, Superintendent's Report. I'm passing around the report here.
My report is now posted as well. First of all, to speak towards graduation, I would like to thank to all the high school administrators, staff, and students for a job well done yesterday. It's been an interesting year. The graduation went off without a hitch yesterday, and all three high schools did an excellent job with that. We had the opportunity yesterday to witness the transition to Latin honors. As many of you were there, Cappy attended, Lori, Seth, and Larry. And it was interesting to see the numbers of students that were able to be recognized in the various different categories. The Latin honors, there's an emphasis on attendance, activity participation, workforce, careers, military, and academic performance, obviously. Also, one of the highlights, I believe, of the night, if you added up all the scholarships awarded, it's over $10 million to the students of the St. Joseph's School District. So, well deserved. School security. I do appreciate the news press for bringing to attention some lapse of security issues that I take full responsibility for. A letter did go out to all building principals, assistant principals, coordinators, and supervisors that spelled out our minimum diligence required. And I do want to make that known to the Board of Education and to the public in regards to that. We must follow policies and procedures for entry into our buildings by all staff, students, parents, and visitors. All staff must have their district identification visible and on them at all times. Would like to note that I have mine on tonight. I think Cassie's got hers on. So, we have been more diligent in that requirement, that needs to be done. Visitors must check in at the office and need to be issued visible identification while in buildings. If a visitor does not have a visible identification while in the building, staff should stop, ask, and direct them to the office. We have got to be diligent upon that. All entryways diligently secured and routinely checked for security. We don't have the best security capabilities in all of our buildings. Obviously, Oak Grove and Carden Park are our newest buildings that have the double entryways. And I've made some recommendations that I think the Board needs to look at in upcoming months. One of the primary things that you'll see tonight will be an RFP presented to the Board that will go out tomorrow for a security audit, and I think that's an initial first step. We also need to continually to review our office protocol and building protocol by all staff. The security clearance system in the buildings, the sign-in checkout sheets that each visitor's supposed to sign, has got to be probably stepped up and implemented more routinely. If not even looked at, we're a digital background check system, and there's those systems out there that can be done relatively quickly by running somebody through that check. I would even suggest an architect RFP on what it would take particularly to do the double entryways at all the buildings. Minimally, though, we can look at security cameras, upgrading those systems. Our security cameras, we have those at all buildings, but when you look at the device that someone in the office is looking from, they have to ask the person to step back, be visible, so they can literally see them better. And whether or not there's ability to actually get a bigger screen, a wider angle view of the outside premise or entryways, needs to be looked at as well. A cost analysis, a full-time operator of main entryways. Cost analysis, a full-time SRO officers at all buildings. Protocol training and implementation for all staff at in-service and compliance training at the beginning of each year. We do this currently, but it needs to be upped, it needs to be more stressed. And not only that, a follow-up, it needs to occur midway and also probably again at the end of the year. We air no doubt in regards to the other day. Our building offices get busy, we ask, our frontline people are building secretaries, and they juggle many tasks while watching the front door. And that needs to be looked at as well, where the focus needs to be on the safety first. Everybody else, phone calls and that kind of stuff, people at the door or at the desk, needs to step back and wait. Committing resources with a priority is a necessity. Otherwise, it just becomes rhetoric. Just talking about it doesn't do any good. You can look at the latest incidents that have occurred nationwide, particularly the latest here in Santa Fe. Heard the building principal speak on TV, and they had probably some of the latest practices, procedures, protocol, and facility in place. It's hard to be 100% safe, but we have to do everything we can within our power, within our resources, to be as safe as we can be. Diligence is a must. Again, take control minimally of what we can do. You cannot overlook multiple layers. In all my readings and literature and talking to various people, you have to have multiple layers because the best way to stop any type of incident from happening is to get it before it happens. And that's what, if anything, the news press article did, it has brought awareness to it, and that's a good thing. But multiple layers means SROs, additional SROs, social workers, school psychologists, door monitors, the word-of-mouth, eyes, ears, hear something, say something mentality, that is the focus that's gotta be there. That's where you get most of these incidents caught before they would even happen. So, I wanted to bring this to the Board's attention. Nobody wants an incident to happen, but we just have to be more diligent to keep it from happening because any school district, any public arena is open to these types of incidents in today's society, and that's the sad thing. But again, I take full responsibility for not setting the bar high enough, but I just want to make sure you know, current administrators, as well as new administrators coming into the district, have been alerted to this protocol. Any questions there?
So, the lanyards that you're getting, that the staff has will be, you'll be lanyards, not clicking on the belt buckle anymore?
They have to be visibly seen.
Okay. And when doing some sixth-grade promotions, there are some of the schools that have already taken that next step, and they've purchased lanyards for their visitors. So, when the visitor comes in, signs in, gets a sticker, they also get this lanyard that's very bright. So, I think that's a really good idea, and kudos to them for going ahead and stepping up to that.
Dr. Williams and Dr. Haynes, and also Mr. Seagris, Dr. Seagris coming in, have got some plans already occurring here in June, July, to work towards the start of the school year when Dr. Van Zyle comes in as well.
Is somebody going to attend the safety conference right after MSBA?
We're working on that, yes.
I think you hit the nail on the head. Last Friday, there was another school shooting, and I saw one of the articles, and it said, "If it can happen here, it can happen anywhere." And this was a wake-up call for all of us. It was. And this is final exam time. If this was our final exam, we failed. We failed this test miserably. And I, you know, as a parent, I was horrified when I saw that article. I was angry as a board member and a taxpayer. I let you know that that night, and to your credit and the administration, they've handled this appropriately. But from a board level, this is unacceptable. We've got to do better. From the Board and to the administration, to all the employees, we all share in the responsibility. And what it really did is it exposed our biggest problem is our outdated facilities. That is what has got to change. That's what you were getting at, Dr. Newhart. That has got to change. We have got to do something about this. And so, the security audit is one thing, but we have got to come up with a comprehensive, long-term, strategic plan for our facilities, and this has got to include it. But with that said, that's no excuse. We've got to do the best with what we can because we aren't gonna change our facilities for next year. We're gonna have the same facilities next year, and so, you're right. Dr. Van Zyle, Dr. Haynes, and Dr. Seagris, this has got to be a priority because we cannot afford to have an incident like that occur again.
Thank you. Moving on, I do want to address administrative turnover and staff turnover in general. This is another area that's got to be corrected. Currently in the district, we have 79 administrative positions. Forty administrators have left the district since July 1 of '15. Basically, we've had 20 this year. Now, that has not all been with people leaving the district. Some of that has been promotions, retirements, those types of things. Those reasons are gonna happen every year, but overall, the roughly 15% of staff turnover, over 50%, or basically 50% of administrative turnover in the last three years, has got to be curbed and reduced. Quality administrators, quality staff must be retained and attracted to the St. Joseph's School District. The cost spent on training and developing experience goes out the window. That's a loss to the district. When you take back and you look at this and you're constantly replacing people, it's getting people caught up to speed that takes the time and their energy and the efforts that we could be doing other things. Board, administrators, teachers, staff, support staff, and community must work together for unified, common goals. We are the St. Joseph's School District, and you've got to remember that. In transition, this is my last board meeting. My last day in the district is May 31st. I'll be taking vacation, as the Board well knows, in June. Dr. Williams will be acting interim superintendent during the month of June until Dr. Van Zyle starts officially on July 1. I wish the St. Joseph's School District nothing but the best in moving forward.
Thank you, Dr. Newhart, and I just want to say, you know, Luke and I have not had an opportunity to really work with you that long. I worked with you a little bit before I was on the Board. On behalf of the Board, I want to say thank you. You came in three years ago, and I've told you this personally, so I want to tell it publicly and to everybody out there on YouTube land. But, you know, in all seriousness, you came in three years ago at a very difficult time. If you compare where we're at now to where we were all the way back then, it's night and day. You had a very difficult task ahead of you. Not many people wanted that job. You've done a great job. You have built a foundation for which we're gonna build on to move this school district forward, because you can't build anything without a good foundation. And I know there's probably some things left on the table that you wanted to accomplish you didn't quite get to, but for the most part, you came in, you did a good job, and I will always remember two things about you was your hard work and your ethics. And those were two things that this school district needed most. So, thank you for what you've done.
Item 5.2, Assistant Superintendent's Report. Dr. Williams.
Good evening. I have a few items tonight to bring to the Board of Education. The first one is a video recap of the apprenticeship signing celebration that we held a couple of weeks ago out at Hilliard Technical Center for those 12 students who are registered youth apprentices beginning next year. Not all of you were able to attend, so this is a two minutes or less recap.
It was a pretty amazing day.
1 minute 18 seconds. So just to recap, the youth apprentices will begin next year as juniors in high school. Most of their work next year will be at Hilliard Technical Center, doing the classroom instruction portion of their apprenticeship work. In their senior year, they will spend a majority of their time on site, doing the on-the-job training portion of their apprenticeship work. Their year following graduation, excuse me, will be spent finishing up their apprenticeship hours, and then they will have that portable apprenticeship certificate, that career credential. Again, we also have a $106,000 Missouri Workforce Development grant that was approved. You have, by formal board action, accepted that grant. On Thursday afternoon, Dr. Eggers and I will be listening to the required financial workshop out of the Division of Workforce Development. So we'll be working through that process immediately. The next item I have for this evening is an update on summer school enrollment. We currently have just over 1,600 students enrolled in summer school. For perspective's sake, we ended last year at about 3,700 students in summer school. This time last year, we were sitting at about 1,100 students in the pre-enrollment portion. So we're ahead a bit in terms of pre-enrollment for summer school. So we're on pace to be at least at the 3,700 student threshold where we were last summer. The last thing on my report for this evening is the Academic Services Handbook. It was posted to Board Docs. You saw this last year for the first time, as you might recall. We spent about a year putting all of this information together, and Dr. Newhart brings up a good point. As you experience turnover in any segment of your workforce, there is always an onboarding process that must occur. And if you don't have institutional knowledge that is documented, codified, proceduralized, you lose that information, that institutional knowledge. So one thing that we undertook in Academic Services was to put together this handbook, which includes perpetual calendars, partnership agreements, all of that information. So I will point out the highlights only of the things that have changed from the previous year. So the entire document has been reviewed and minor revisions have been made. The major revisions occur on page four. The business partnerships were updated. I worked with Mike Buckler to get a comprehensive list. I presented it in a bit of a different format in this year's version. Then on page seven, the Academic Services Strategic Plan was included. This has been presented independently at least twice to the Board of Education, I think most recently in October. But I think it's important for all of the people in Academic Services, the school district and the community, to be able to access this in one place. So these are the essential questions, the updates, the strategic plan that we have been working through in Academic Services for the last 18-plus months, including the metrics for that. And that encompasses pages seven through 16. Again, you've seen that before independently. It is just in this document as well. On page 22 begins the perpetual calendars, and these have been reviewed and overhauled. As we have the retirement of Dr. Colauer this year, it is important for Dr. Thomason to be able to review the perpetual calendar for special programs. As things like MSIP items not waived are removed, those things are taken out of the perpetual calendars. These are continuously updated. So these are things that if, you know, the saying I like to use is, if I win the lottery tomorrow and Marley 2.0 comes in on July 1st, where, what was I doing? And what was the timeline? That significantly reduces the onboarding process, and it captures institutional knowledge. So you'll see apprenticeship work has been included. You'll see that summer school timelines are there. Obviously, it's not everything we do on a day-to-day basis, but it certainly does provide a comprehensive overview of the work of Academic Services. Any questions?
Looks amazing. Thank you for doing it.
Is this available to, public to see online?
It's posted on Board Docs.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Item 5.3, we have a distinguished guest with us today. City Councilman-at-Large Brian Myers is here and would like to address the board about a new project he's working on.
Thank you, Seth. Distinguished is probably the nicest thing I've been called since April 16th, but I'll take it. I'm here tonight because I love our community, but like a lot of people in our community, I'm not really satisfied with the way it looks. Going back to the Community Alliance Community Survey that went back in 2016, the way our community looks rates the lowest in every single category. Now, this new Community Alliance survey that's getting ready to go out, I believe in June, will probably rank crime a little ahead of that, but public appearance has always been, you know, in the bottom three categories of where people are satisfied. And, you know, if I could wave a magic wand, there'd be a million things we could do to make our city look better. The old joke's always been, we've got housing for 100,000 people, but we only have 76,000 that live in the city. We've got a lot of empty buildings, both residential and commercial in our city. We can't make, we can't wave a wand to make that go away. But what we can do are get people, particularly students, involved in making our city look better as far as the amount of trash that's on our streets. I live in Midtown. My wife and I bought a home in the Museum Hill neighborhood. We live at 15th and Angelique. We both work downtown. And just as an experiment, one day, I took a trash bag and I walked my normal route, and before I'd even gotten halfway there, without any route deviation whatsoever, I filled the trash bag. And it ranges from everything, from fast food wrappers to soda cans. The cause of it, I mean, it's not any one singular thing. People aren't securing their trash can lids. People aren't paying for trash service. We see people drive by all the time and just throw their garbage out the window. It's not acceptable as a city, and as your city councilman. I'm dedicated to tightening up our ordinances for litter and trash control and making sure that they're enforced. But what we can do in the meantime, and what I ask each of you to consider, I'm aware that to graduate high school, you need 10 hours of community service. And I would like to see groups of high school students in our community, in target areas that we know to be a problem with trash on the streets and on the curbing and in the tree lawns, and get them out there twice a month, under the supervision of myself and fellow council member from District 1, Madison Davis, who is also wanting to be involved with this. As a district, this costs you absolutely no money, but a little bit of time in helping us identify which students would be available to do this. The city, under Clint Thompson's department, has dedicated some funds. It's a very minimal amount, but it'd be to supply trash bags, heavy-duty trash bags, and heavy-duty gloves. That way, they're picking up garbage and doing it the safest way possible. And then, you know, the city would also go, if we do this on a Saturday or Sunday, the city would go by the streets that we worked on and collect the bags for us and dispose of them at the landfill. That's my pitch. What I'm hoping to do is get these students involved in their community, give them a sense of ownership. And I can tell you personally, as someone that's had to pick up other people's trash, if these students are asked to do this, they will never litter as an adult. So I was pretty bad about it when I was younger. I was involved in a service group. We had, we adopted a stretch of highway. And let me tell you, if you're picking up other people's garbage, you dispose of yours properly. So thank you all for letting me come here. I would love to work with you guys on this and hopefully some other projects in the future. And at this time, if any of you have any questions or...
I have a question. How many students are you thinking that you're going to need at each of these? And how many months? Only certain months, like you're not going to go when it's really wintery? I don't know what your, do you have a plan as far as that?
I would like to start with two days a month, and we're going to target two specific neighborhoods, Museum Hill and Harris Kemper. And the reason why I picked those two is because they are older parts of town. They've been identified as being some of the worst ones with trash that's blowing around. And they also each have their own respective neighborhood associations, which I'll be speaking to both of those later in the summer and hoping to garner some support from them. But to further answer your question, if we could get, you know, 10 to 12 students at a time and see how that works, and then we'll do, you know, I'm hoping maybe a four-block by six-block area each time we go out.
For how long each time?
Really, just three or four hours. I wouldn't think it'd be more than, any more than that to cover that amount of turf.
Any other questions?
Who would be the proper administrative person to start working with him and figure out all the details? I think that's something administrators, we need to discuss and get back with you on that. We do some of this right now through some volunteer. I think many of you might be aware, for instance, Johnny Coy took his baseball team out and helped with the south end on some trash pickup. The central football team helped on the cleanup at just the recent Apple Blossom Festival on Friday and Saturday. So, you know, that might be something we would need to reach out to some of those groups and volunteers that might be interested in that type of volunteer work. So let us, as administrators, we're getting this firsthand here tonight as well. We need to converse, and we'll get back with you on that.
I appreciate that. Any other questions that any of you might have? Any other questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, Dr. Green.
I appreciate Councilman Myers showing up tonight for a couple of reasons. One, this initiative, which I share his passion for this, with this initiative. And two, I appreciate him coming in just to kind of start a dialogue between the city and the school district, starting the dialogue to get us working together on different initiatives.
Yeah.
I concur, Dr. Green. I'll also say that Mayor McMurray's also reached out to me, and so hopefully this will be the start of a better partnership between the city and the school district, and we can work together to move this community forward.
Well, I hope so. We're two of the major components in this city, and there's nothing ill to be had with us working together on many things. So I thank you all for your time. I've got my own meeting I've got to get to, so.
Thank you.
But thank you again, and should any of you have any questions, concerns, comments, before you guys meet again, feel free to contact me, and I'll answer your questions the best I can.
Thank you.
So thank you all very much.
All right, item 6.0, 6.1, approval of donations.
I'd make a motion to approve the donations that have been presented on this report.
Second.
Motion in a second. Hearing no discussion, we'll vote.
And just would like to say thank you to everyone who's made those donations.
Motion carries 6-0. Item 7.0, consent agenda. Is there any item anyone would like removed from the consent agenda for any reason?
Seeing none, I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Motion in a second. Hearing no discussion, we'll vote. Motion carries 6-0. Item 8.0, personnel and finance report. Item 8.1, approval of the bills.
If there's no questions, then I would make a motion that we approve them as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Motion carries 6-0. Item 8.0, personnel and finance report. Item 8.1, approval of the bills.
If there's no questions, then I would make a motion that we approve them as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Motion carries 6-0. Item 8.2, April financials, bank reconciliation statement, self-funded health insurance. Any questions on that?
I make a motion to approve the financial statements as presented.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Hearing no discussion, we'll vote. Motion carries 6-0. Item 8.2, April financials, bank reconciliation statement, self-funded health insurance. Any questions on that?
I make a motion to approve the financial statements as presented.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Hearing no discussion, we'll vote. Item 8.3, personnel report. Dr. Kraus.
Yes, the regular personnel was, report was in the docs, and then I left the supplemental report at your workstations. I don't believe there's anything unusual in either of them. Does anyone have any questions?
I do. We had the people out in the rotunda today from TSA, and they are normally a extra-duty contract position. But I don't think that we have approved any of those for the coming year so far. Is that right?
That's correct.
Are we planning to?
Yes, we're in the middle of doing some assessment of that. We are finding that we have some people who have received stipends in the past and are not serving any children, which obviously is not a good use of taxpayer money. We also have several instances where we have both a head and assistant coach for less than a handful of kids, which also isn't a good use of our money. So those will be forthcoming as soon as we complete our analysis of what's needed.
Okay, great. I just saw them there tonight, and I was like, well, we're going to have these next year too, aren't we? So I was a little bit, just wanting to know what was happening with that. Thank you.
Sure.
I'd make a motion that we accept personnel report and supplemental as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Motion carries 5-0 with one abstention. Item 8.4, 2018-19 budget proposal.
We have put together a brief overview. Wes and Bridget have been working on this. I'll have Cassie pass that around to begin with.
That's Bridget.
Of course. She's very good.
See, you see what I put together now. You see what Bridget puts together.
Well, can we be honest? This is something you'd hear to read.
And before I turn it over to Wes, a couple of things. One, the hard part is over with, okay? You have a balanced budget that will be presented for your approval here in June. Now, having said that, going forward, it still doesn't eliminate the fact that you're going to have to be prudent and ultimately to do things, keep evaluating programs, and also look at a revenue issue. With that in mind, I'll turn it over to Wes as this is broken down. An estimated expenditures for 1819. The total budget, 125.9 million. Broken down into capital projects, 3 million. Debt service, 5.1 million. Supplies, 10.37 million. Purchased services, 12.4 million. Salary and benefits make up the majority of our budget at $95 million, out of that 125 million. Benefits include health insurance and retirement.
Taxes.
And taxes. When you look at all the reductions we have made in the school closures totaling $2.8 million, we reduce teaching staff by 1.2 million in both buildings, Lake Elementary and Humboldt. Operations, 175,000 in both buildings. Purchased services, 15,000. Supplies, 15,000. But the key element here is long-term savings on deferred maintenance. That's $500,000, a half a million dollars per building over the next three years. Now, that is not reflected in your budget next year, and I'll have Wes speak to that a little bit more, but it's the recurring costs in subsequent years that was on the SIP capital improvement plan for the district, okay? They were not scheduled for anything next year. They were in subsequent years. The total budget reductions were 7.4 million, $7,378,381.81. Now, that takes into consideration not only the reductions, but also the steps in movement and new staff that have been coming in. That's why you see that number more exact as of today. So we hope that spells it out a little bit better in a simplified fashion. We are in the process of breaking down salary and benefits into administrative costs, both at the district office, the downtown building... office, the downtown building, and the buildings, certified teachers, and then also support staff. So, we'll have that figure broken down for you here in June. So, Wes, I'll turn it over to you.
So, a little bit more explanation on the long-term savings deferred maintenance. So, the long-term savings is the fewer buildings you have, the more money you save, because then you don't have to continuously keep upkeep on those buildings. So, that's long-term. This is what we had scheduled over the next three years. I mean, if you went out 10 years, this number would probably be closer to $2 million. So, that's where the long-term savings comes, that you don't see immediately, because you don't have to replace the HVAC units or air conditioning units. You don't have to replace the heating, the sewer, the plumbing, the roofs, the parking lots, the windows, those kind of things. That's where it saves you money. The better you utilize your footprint you have, the smaller the footprint, the more the savings you have. Does everybody understand that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is there any other questions about this one-page sheet?
Well, I have a question, because we have historically always had a triage in 10, which is...
Correct. And that's what we took these numbers off of.
So, but you said you just took the numbers off for the next two or three years.
Right. I think the triage in 10 is seven years old.
Okay.
So, part of your facility plan that you're going to have to dig into pretty quick here, you probably need to start a new triage in 10.
Okay.
And you most definitely want to do it next year with Priscilla caught while he's still here. And not that he's going anywhere, but he's getting close to the retirement. You want to try to use his knowledge. He's been with the district over 30 years. So, when they hit that 30-year number, everybody gets a little nervous, because that's when they can...
Get a lot of urgency.
Yeah. Anyway, so that'll be a big project that you guys really need to dig into next year, in my opinion, even though I won't be here.
Yeah, question? Yes. So, Wes, if I understand this correctly, that's 500,000 per building. That'd be a million dollars over a three-year period, three years for both buildings.
Correct.
So, is it correct to say we're saving $330,000 per year for the next three years?
Not really, because there wasn't anything scheduled for next year. So, that wasn't included in next year's budget. The reason we did it this way was, I couldn't put it that it was a total savings for next year, because if you want to go, if you want to average it, you're going to save 2.8 million dollars every year. So, you'd have to do 2.8, 2.8, 2.8.
Okay.
But it's, yeah.
Yeah. It's just, it's kind of, I'm trying to make sure that I have an easy way to explain when the question comes up to somebody that I run into at the barber shop.
The easiest way that I think, when you have fewer buildings, you have fewer maintenance. And that's, you know, you have...
So, we're estimating it's going to cost a million dollars for those two buildings for the next three-year period of maintenance.
Correct. Any other questions on this? Wes, I just want to say thank you, and to Bridget as well. I asked for that last time about the school closures, and good job. Thank you.
Okay, the budget. Expenditures and revenues changed a little bit. They released part of the federal monies. So, the way the federal money works is we have to allocate every dollar by July 1st, and it has to reflect in our budget. So, we have to submit a budget every year to the federal government based on the allocation that they send us. So, that's why you've seen an increase in the expenditures from last time, because the allocations came in a little bit better on some things, a little worse on other things. By the time I got done adjusting it, I call it a balanced budget. I think I have about $800 surplus next year. To me, if we're within $10,000, that's a balanced budget. We worked really hard on this, the whole staff, the whole administrative staff and the staff. We put a lot of time into it. So, is there any questions?
So, with revenue coming in, so we have more on expenditures, but we have the same amount on revenue.
Correct. When I initially done the revenues, I was anticipating a larger reduction in federal money. When it came in higher than what I anticipated, I had to go in and adjust the federal expenses. We have to allocate the money. It does not necessarily mean that it has to be spent, but it has to be allocated dollar for dollar. That's a federal requirement.
We have to say this is where exactly the money is going.
And some of the federal programs, we can carry some of the money over from year to year. It's not a use-it-lose-it thing.
So, with the state, have we...
And the state, we did the adjustments for the state. We used the 6308, which the state fully funded the formula, added a little bit of money to the transportation. Transportation's a little scary, because they can always come in and say, we're going to take it away. Transportation wasn't a huge increase for us, about 50,000.
Well, isn't transportation, we're supposed to be getting up to, what, 70, 75%?
Yeah, we're getting like 19% or 20%.
17?
Yeah, it's not very much. They added 10 million into it, so it increased it a little bit.
Yeah, but how many school districts are there in their state?
Well, we, it came out to about 50,000 for us. But I wouldn't count on it, because that'll be the first thing he cuts if we're short.
Right.
That's why they were pushing pretty hard to put the money towards the foundation formula rather than the transportation, because that's always one of the first things that they cut. Anyway, there's still some federal monies that haven't come in yet. That's why we're not recommending the approval tonight. But it'll be the same situation. Whatever goes, if it goes up or down, I will adjust revenues and expenditures up and down to reflect. And it's just for the federal money. The state and everything else, I think we're pretty close on. There's very little, very little cushion. I mean, if we have a lot of expenses next year that we don't anticipate, you're going to deficit spend. With the revenues, we don't have the ADA, our final average daily attendance for the year. If it comes in lower than I anticipated, we could deficit spend. I tried to put it as close to dollars I could, I could feel comfortable with. So, there's not much cushion.
What percentage are we at, at our reserves?
15% is down at the bottom. 17, 18, we anticipate a 15% reserve at the end of this year, and we will do a transfer from operating to capital, because if you notice, our capital reserve is dropping pretty substantially. So, we will, we will do whatever transfer we can to keep at that 15%. And I'll explain that when we get a little further into the other items.
The next four items, 8.5 to 8.8, actually deal with finishing up this current year. They are info items tonight for you to get out in front of. The board members that have been here understand this. This is something that you typically do every year that prior to Wes and myself coming in was not done.
Correct.
And we're just trying to make you get into the habit of seeing this. Auditors ask for this by board approval. So, here in June, you'll have to do these things. So, Wes, with that in mind, 8.5.
Do we, do we have any other questions on the budget? I mean, I could go through the sheets real quick and kind of explain them.
Are we anticipating that we're going to be approving at our board meeting in June, which is, I don't remember what that date is?
Typically, you approved the budget the last meeting in June. I mean, and that's what most districts do.
So, that's the 25th of June.
Yes.
And we'll have a work session in between there.
Yeah, and you'll have a work session, and hopefully, we'll have all the questions answered and everything by the work session to where it's just a formality in June. You just, okay, we're done. I don't see any significant changes coming at this point that there would be a lot of discussion going forward.
Just one question, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Cope.
At what point do you think we'll be able to get the student population of each building estimate for next year?
We're working on that currently. I have some numbers. I've got to review them a little bit, because they've changed, and I want to make sure to verify them that they are correct, as close as they can be. And then, like I said, the ADA tomorrow is the last day for school. And hopefully, by the first of June, I'll have good ADA numbers. So, if the state, if they come in higher than I anticipate, I can go in and adjust the state formula.
And are you comfortable enough with this? You can send this in Excel format to us?
Sure.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions on the budget?
If you have questions, send them through Robert, and I'll try to get them answered, and we'll send them all out to everybody.
Very good.
Okay.
8.5.
Budget to actual?
Budget to actual. So, at the end of the year, once we're closed out, once we do all of our adjustments and everything, we will move the budget, the actual expenditures for every line item, to the budget. So, then it will become the actual budget for the year. And we're supposed to round it within a dollar. We typically round it up of every line item.
Any questions on that? 8.6, 217, 18, activity accounts.
Okay, so, the activity accounts that we zero out, and it always makes people nervous when I say that, any of the fundraising accounts, we do not zero out. So, the money that the students are raising funds for, we carry those balances over every year. It's the district's student activity accounts that are negative. For example, football, baseball, basketball, softball, anything that the district supports with district money, we zero those out. If we didn't, they would continuously, the balances would just get negative even more and more and more. So, we already use local funds to support those. At the end of the year, we just zero them out. So, that way, the negative balances don't continue to carry forward.
So, you have a clear picture of what we're spending.
Correct. But we do not zero out student, the fundraising accounts. Right.
And now, we're doing an audit on those activity accounts. Has that started yet?
It'll, it's starting here sometime in June.
In June, okay, thank you.
We will keep you updated when those come. The annual audit is the first week in June, the Monday and Tuesday, he'll be here. And at that time, we'll meet with the audit committee, and the audit committee will meet with John, our auditor, to discuss any concerns that they have and wanted to look into.
Thank you.
Operating Fund 1 to Fund 2?
Okay, so, the teacher fund, Fund 2, we have to zero out at the, at the end of every year. If you have a positive balance, that's never a good thing. If you do, then the teachers' unions will come and ask you to give more raises, so that way it zeros it out. They're almost always negative. Very rarely, I don't know that I've ever seen one that was positive. We put all state monies currently into Fund 2, and so what this reflects is that we do not receive enough state money and federal money to cover teacher funds. So, that means we use a larger portion or local funds to help support it. And that's why it's negative. And then, so at the end of the year, we zero it out. We transfer from 1 to 2.
Any questions on that? Item 8.8.
Okay, now, 8.8 is the GTB line transfer, and we're going to, we're going to set our minimum fund balance at 15%. So, we can transfer up to, I think I attached the number, it's 5,282,221. That is the maximum that we can transfer. We will not transfer that amount. We will not receive that much in surplus. But whatever the extra is, to keep our fund balance reserve at 15%, we will transfer into capital, so we can still continue to do our capital projects.
If you didn't, you see there on your balance sheet, you recall the capital project fund would deplete to roughly 3.6 million, I believe it was?
Yeah, it'll deplete pretty quick. So, for 18, we're going to do 225, but the next two years after that, you would be almost at a zero balance, because I'm transferring almost 4, 5, 5.2 million in to keep it from going to zero. Because you're going to always have capital projects you're going to have to do every year. Sometimes you can do those with bonds. If you go to the taxpayers and ask them to issue bonds, and in that year, you would not necessarily need to do a transfer.
So, if we did a bond issue, then we would actually be saving capital money, so...
Correct. You could actually spend the money in the operating.
So, that's why you wait till the end?
Correct.
Any other questions on that? Thank you, Wes. Item 9.0, old business. 9.1, 2018-19 health insurance rates clarification.
We have Lori Nielsen with us tonight, and we're seeking board approval on this clarification for a new, well, it's not a new rate sheet, it's a clarified rate sheet. Okay, Lori?
Yes. Thank you very much for having me tonight. To the new board members, and Mr. President, congratulations, and thank you for having me. I'll introduce myself, Dr. Newhart did, but Lori Nielsen with JW Tarrell. I thank you for working with us, and I think that we have been able to bring to you exactly what you've asked for to this point, and we hope to continue to bring positive results and positive items when we get to be the happy, the happy note to the board meeting. So, and as Dr. Newhart said, this that you have been provided in your board docs is just a clarification. You have already approved in March that the rates for the health insurance plan are to stay exactly the same. We did make the move to reduce the board contribution by $100 per active employee, and that was the only savings. Cobra employees are, still have to be treated as they are as actives. Retirees are treated the same as they were before as well. So, it was our position, and we understood the board, to say, we wanted no change in the amount of money that came out of employee or retiree's pocket towards their benefits or their medical insurance. And that's what we have achieved. But there has been a few questions, and this helps to clarify. So, a person that's retiring this year, if you're looking at the amount that the total premium, total monthly cost, it appears to be $100 more. It is exactly the same as what the retirees paid last year, so there is no change. Because the board reduced contribution, whenever you illustrate it out like this, it appears to be $100 more, but in actual fact, it is not. Does that make sense? Yes. Okay.
The new rate sheet you see attached now includes the retiree cost, where the previous rate sheet didn't. And what became confusing was, you know, if a new person came in, what would they think the rates were? And we want to make sure it reflects correctly on the rate sheet, because this is what is posted to the website.
Right.
And Lori and JW Tarrell were able to put this together. It reflects basically the employee's cost now, the board contribution cost, what the total cost is, and what the monthly retiree cost would be. So, that way, hopefully, there's not any questions in going forward. There's no change in what an employee is contributing, or what a retiree is contributing from this current year going into 1819.
Correct. We mentioned in the March meeting that because the district has reduced their contribution by $100, that would reduce the amount going into retirement, that it would also on that side of it. But it does not change anything at all for what the employee is contributing.
And it's not just retirees, it's also anybody that covers the insurance.
Correct.
It would be the retired, the last column there.
The retiree column.
So, we might want to adjust that chain, monthly retiree and Cobra.
Cobra has to be the same. Cobra is the same as active. So, if we're illustrating, and we can discuss that to make sure, but this is, this is compliant, the way this is. So, that last column is retirees, because retirees are responsible for 100%, and that is, has not changed for the premium that we've set for the plan. The $100 that the district is saving on each active employee is actually coming out of reserves. So, we're just reducing the reserve pool by that $100. So, the premiums have not changed.
The insurance pool.
The, right, the reserve, the...
Insurance pool reserve.
Medical reserves, yes.
But if...
Since we've done some funding, then has been...
Correct, yes. We knew we were funding at a healthy level as we were going through last year, and going through the United SJSD meetings, there was talk about buying additional plans for the employees, dental and vision. And we would have had funds to do that. But because of the budget restraints and, or constraints, and looking for ways to save, and this was a choice that was made, we have done that. But by leaving the premiums the same, we have the ability then to increase that again next year if funding is, is in a better position, or if we need to do that. However, we have estimated or illustrated for, if we don't change that, we're still going to be in a good position. We will still be collecting more funds than we're paying out in claims. So, we're not going to put ourselves in a, in a negative position in that reserve account for the health benefit plan.
Would you like to see the Cobra cost illustrated on that?
The Cobra cost has to be the same as the retiree cost, because they are no longer employed by the district.
Right. And we can make that a column on there as well, if that, if that is appropriate.
It'll be the exact same as the retiree amount.
Can't you just put retiree slash?
Cobra, yeah.
We can make that amendment and send it over to you, yeah.
They need to be the same.
But we'd like to make sure the board has approval on this, and make the motion with the Cobra reflected on there as well.
I'd make that motion. Second.
A motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Dr. Green.
Yeah, this is a question for Ms. Nielsen. Lori, we have, we've been able to stay in a very strong position at our health insurance fund balance this year. What are some of the key features moving forward that are going to keep us in a strong position in that area, that are going to help us with leverage in the future?
Sure. At our last renewal, you all approved the ability for us to use our PATH technology, which is a deep dive into claims. Kansas City Blue Cross does that for us at their level, but this is an independent third party, and just another way of checks and balancing. And we have the ability to manipulate what we're diving down into. So, if we see a high incidence of diabetes in one building or another, then we can target... So, if we see a high incidence of diabetes in one building or another, then we can target, excuse me, we can target that building with more education and programs to, to help them to utilize claims properly. We've seen a great uptick in the telemedicine. That's been a great initiative that the district has put out to encourage employees to use the telemedicine. It's cost-effective for the employee, and it lets them get the treatment that they need sooner. They're not missing a full day of, of school, and they're able to get the treatment that they need. So, we're, little things along the way, we're implementing as positive utilization, but then we're also monitoring the utilization, so we can make sure that people are able to continue their treatment. Because somebody that is on the maintenance and keeping up with the maintenance is going to fare better whenever it comes to our claims reserve at the end of the year.
And haven't we upped our wellness program? That's something that you have a lot more information, that we previously had an education piece to the staff members as well.
Yes, yes. And moving in the, in the future, not only are we going to target the physical wellness, but the mental wellness is becoming very prevalent, and, and we're going to integrate pieces and parts of that as well.
Any further discussion? Okay, we can vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lori, thank you very much.
You're welcome. We'll have that over tomorrow.
Item 9.2, MOU city softball agreement.
Yes, before you, this evening for a decision is the MOU between the city and the school district for Central to be responsible for the softball field at noise.
I'd make a motion to approve as submitted.
Motion and a second. Hearing no discussion, we can vote. Item 9.3, petition for payroll deduction of MSTA dues. Dr. Kraus?
Yes, senior materials, there's a sheet signed by 19 MSTA members requesting that you allow them to have their dues deducted through the payroll deductions. This is in accordance with Board Policy, DLB. Are there any questions?
It is a board decision on Policy, DLB. Many of you recall last May, when this policy was revised. It is recommended that organizations look at direct payment or deposits, but it is a board option and the board, and organizations to, to apply to have the payroll deduction. But, it is up to board.
I'd make a motion that we approve this. Second?
I just have a comment, Mr. President.
Yes, Ms. Anderson.
I agree that it would be best for our organization to have the withdrawals done through their own personal accounts, and I think it's better for the organizations themselves as well. Because then, if somebody ever leaves the school district and goes to another one, they're already members of that group, and they can just carry that along with them. It doesn't end with the, say, just the school district not objecting to this, this system that we're gonna do tonight. But, just for people who are out there, you know, you could sign up, when you sign up with an organization, you can have it just come right out of your bank account. You don't have to go through the school district. It doesn't give you any tax benefit or anything to do it that way. And, and then you can just, you know, have it that way for wherever you are to go.
They can be members even if they're not employed by the school district.
Well, there you go.
Well, there you go.
So, anyway, I just wanted to comment that it's not a bad thing to have it just be separate from the school district.
I think more and more people do that. I mean, a lot of things are paid online for bill pays.
Any further discussion? If not, we can vote. I didn't vote.
No, I didn't either. It came up, health insurance rates.
Yeah.
Well, it hasn't switched.
Yeah, it hasn't switched over yet.
Mine had switched over. Mine, we're still on insurance. Should we click next item and then sync, or?
I need your technical assistance.
No one touch anything. Dr. Haynes?
Would you like to hear about the social studies curriculum?
Yeah, let's move on, then we'll come back. That's a great idea.
Because whether it's up there, I can, got some material here for you.
We will come back to that. Let's move on to item 10.1, social studies curriculum.
Well, this is the final installment of the secondary social studies curriculum. Again, we've had a team diligent completing these courses. So, the one that we bring to you tonight would be AP American Government, American Government A, Modern American History A, Modern American History B. Now, since this was posted on the electronic school board site, there's been two additional courses that Mr. Nash told me about that have been uploaded to BYOC, which is our curriculum management platform here in the SJSD. That would be Modern American History and World, Modern World History to support English speakers of other languages. So, all these courses are high school level courses, and I would, don't expect a third installment of social studies curriculum. Again, many thanks to our curriculum writing team, they've done a phenomenal job knocking this out. And this is informational for tonight, and then we'll be back at one of the June meetings.
Did I read that they've been working for the last two or three years for this, on this? Or is that something else?
It's, it's a two-year process.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Are we having the same classes we have now, as well as these additional ones? Are we losing some?
As far as, under the umbrella of social studies? Well...
Because, I mean, if you're adding them, do you have to take some out? Because of what I said, I need to think of it.
I, I wouldn't say that these are necessarily additions, these are revisions of the current curricula. I would say those last two are additional supports, but they just express the same content, but just additional supports for English speakers.
The modern part is what threw me. I wasn't familiar with that term in the current classes.
I believe it was 21st century American history, and we're embracing the fact that we are citizens of the 21st century, so it's modern.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna go back real fast to item 9.3 if we can. I think we all voted, just to make sure. Show the vote. It won't let you go back.
Yeah, if you scroll down, it says six oh.
We already voted.
We already voted.
I think it passed six oh. It passed, okay. So, item 9.3 passed six oh. And it's on there at the bottom. Okay. Item 10.2, K-12 parent student handbook.
Yes, before you, this evening for your review is just the revisions for the handbook for next year. You should have attached kind of a cheat sheet of all the changes. The changes are highlighted in, in yellow throughout. Are there any questions?
Page four, I think I brought this to Marley's attention. Is this the one that we were talking about? It's talking about the, let me get that, hold on, I'm sorry. It's about the lunches, free, the program that we're on, the community eligibility program. We need to remove the...
Yeah, there'll be just a couple revisions we'll bring back to you that we caught since we put this uploaded.
I had a question. It's about this Spregio, is that how you say it?
Spregio?
Spregio?
Uh-huh.
Which is the online reporting of bullying, which I liked that there's a way that people can report that online. I think that's very useful.
Yes.
Because people are sometimes reluctant to come forward, and that's a way to do it, just from your own home. I was wondering if there's an app available for that, because as we know, most of our students use their cell phone.
There, there is a, a link on all the school websites, our homepages, and also on our homepage. There's a little Spregio app. I don't know if you pull up our homepage.
Is it something they can download from an app store and have on their phone?
Not yet. There's not an app.
Okay.
But, that's where, it's right there, then it pops up as how you make the report.
I just want to make it as available for children and their families as possible.
But, you can do it online from your phone.
Yes, you could just pull up like this, you just pulled up our district website and was able to pull this right up. But, I'll ask, I'll ask the company to have it.
And we do have an app for our website. Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah. So, you can have the sage of the school district app.
And just go right to this link.
Find that there.
Yes.
So, that would be a way for someone to find it.
Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you. Item 10.3, physical, so, physical security process and compliance audit proposal.
Yes, I want to thank Jenny out of Finance Department for putting this together. There was a little transition there between people leaving the district and Jenny assuming this position. But, before you, you see an RFP that we'd like to send out for security audit bid, we would bring back to you in June, those bids, but we would like to get this posted tomorrow.
How long do we put it out?
Two weeks.
Two weeks? So, we can have this by the work session?
Close.
Do you have some specific companies that you're, that you're gonna send to? You have mine?
Yes, we've had some people contact us, so, we'll work with the IT department. Andy still talks to us occasionally. He's given us some recommendations, so, we'll, we'll definitely get it out to some people that we know will do a good job, and then we'll, then we post it, we'll get a ton of people.
Does MSBA do this? Do they have an audit?
I, I, I'm not sure.
I think they have.
They might have some knowledge of businesses that would do an audit.
We might just check them.
Do we need a, it says info, so no vote? Any other questions on the security audit? Item 10.4, liability and workman's compensation insurance renewal.
I'm gonna take this one since Wes was not here Friday, and we sat down with Thomas McGee, Brian Kraus and I did. If you would, turn to page six of the electronic proposal. Best summary in regards to this, our, our liability coverage is needing to be renewed or expires here June 30th for July 1. Thomas McGee is our current broker in this area, and currently, we have Midwest Public Risk as our provider. And the current premium in all these areas is $1,014,576. The new bid with NPR is $1,066,705. And they did also quote some renewal options that basically would be taking it out to other providers, Western World, Wright, Berkeley were some of those that are involved. We asked the question if the legal for the educator's legal liability could be carved out. NPR would not do that. So, what we're recommending at this time, you have to give NPR 90 days notice to, to seek elsewhere. And I'm sure Dr. Van Zyl and even Dr. Edgar's coming in are gonna have their own ideas. We suggest that you, that we'll be recommending NPR proposal. Stay with them. Any other change can be made at January 1 or even July 1 of, of next year. And minimally, I would say, you do this for a one-year renewal.
And then, we can do an RFP again, you know, next year, next year sometime.
Correct. Well, I know Dr. Edgar is, for instance, is on Music's board. Music is another pool, similar to NPR statewide, Missouri United School Insurance, and that could be an option that they look, could look at. Part of the dilemma is here, when you have a lot of these legal issues and lawsuits pending, is any switch over and any type of coverage. You really need to make sure you go to a claims adjusted approach to where you're covered. You're not gonna worry about when the incident occurred. Currently, we're under an occurrence, and that's basically what you've been under for the last decade. And I would suggest that you get away from that occurrence liability coverage and go to a, a claims coverage.
You're talking about when the claim is made?
Basically, when the claim is made, you are, you know, that way, that insurance company are with you, yeah, that you're with, you're guaranteed coverage.
Because if something happened three years ago, and somebody comes, and then you have to go track it back to who is the insurance coverage at the time.
Right. Any questions?
So, we'll have something in June on this?
Right. You'll have a final recommendation in June on it. But, currently, in talking with, with many people involved, including Wes, Brian Kraus, Thomas McGee, as well as our own legal, we've gotta be covered July 1.
Right.
So, at this point in the time of the game, we suggest you continue coverage, and if you want to switch, you let Gabe and Dr. Van Zyl address that.
Time for another RFP.
Any other questions on that? All right. Item 11.0, board policies. So, these were all part of the work session that we had. So, the idea here is to take these all as, all as a group, right?
I'd make a motion that we accept them all as presented.
I second. Lori and I are not allowing any questions. We're not allowing any questions.
The policy committee.
Thank you from the policy committee. Appreciate that. So, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we can vote. Motion carries six zero. All right. Item 12.0, board policies, 12.1, MSBA policy project.
MSBA was requesting board approval on the policy adoption that we're trying to expedite. And before you is the email we received from MSBA, and basically, it's incorporating the pending changes from Section G. Provide the standard MSBA documents for each policy, and then after adoption and approval, the policies procedure manuals online for the district. And then, MSBA will go through the remainder of the district's custom language and, and put it in for inclusion if the board desires. So, this will allow MSBA official authority to move forward to expedite this process.
And then, when are we anticipating the project to be finished? The available units complete form, updated form?
We're meeting, I know, this week, I believe Thursday, and that will take care of basically Section G.
Well, we've got G done. Now, we're gonna do the...
The 17, 18 updates.
Yes.
And you're gonna be close, Tammy, that's all I can say.
Thank you.
And, of course, a lot of it depends on any changes that state legislature makes, because that affects, then we have to go through the whole...
Yeah. The only, the only thing that I would like to make sure that everyone understands is that when we go from the custom language that we now have in the rest of the sections, if we adopt MSBAs, there's going to be some differences. So, we may have employees that are used to, well, we have this in our current policy, but if we go and adopt just a generic MSBA, we will have to do our due diligence as the policy committee and administration to go back and to then make sure that we get all of that custom language in. So, there might be some lapses, so we'll have to be very careful in how we move forward, Dr. Kraus, when reading.
Or, or you make sure administrative procedures covers the custom language.
So, we just need to make sure that we, we have all the bases covered. I don't want it to be...
So, I just want to make sure I understand. We want to do these in big chunks so that we don't continue sort of dragging on payments to them and just kind of get it done and, and have it here for us to sort through over time. Is that correct?
Well, since we're on the maintenance, we will always have, there's always a fee associated. We, if you remember right, when we first started the policy...
But, we upped it to a more complete...
Well, we just had their basic service to begin with, prior to us coming on.
And that was when they would give us updates by, by what happens in the legislature.
Right. So, what they do, and anytime there's any change, they, they send out those to everybody.
Right.
So, with us being as part of the full maintenance, is that they are actually recreating all of ours, and there are situations where we have policies that are in one section that don't belong in that section. Well, they have found that we have moved it, approved it into another section. So, they're really creating a new book for us, per se.
Mm-hmm.
And so once this is all done, they upload it to their, not website, or I guess it is a website.
Well, it is.
They're clouded. Where they're, they house it, and then they will be, once that's done, anytime anything's done, any changes that we make, they have to update it. They have to upload it to the website. And what will be really nice is that once we get it to their system, we'll be able to search it. So you can put in a keyword, because if anybody...
Our search doesn't work very well.
Our search doesn't work very well. So this will help us get through and find the policies that we really need in certain situations.
So help me understand then what the difference is that we're about to...
Okay, instead of us going through each section and taking longer, once we complete the 17, 18 updates, we completed G here, I believe, tonight.
Right.
Once we complete the 17, 18 updates, any remaining sections that we have not done, H on, okay, they will update for us. You'll get one full book that you'll board approve. And then if you want to make any changes after that, you go back and just do it at that time.
So we have to go through and compare them to our current policies? Or will they say, when they give it to us, what they changed?
They will tell us, they tell us what the difference is.
I see. And so then if we say, oh, oh, we don't want to change that part in that particular policy, we then notify them and they update that. Okay. And so it is kind of going through it ourselves.
It is, but you're getting the full book and doing it now in reverse.
Gotcha.
It's just we're running the risk of...
And then we'll go back to basic maintenance instead of...
Yeah, it'll just...
That's just...
You've got to make sure you're current with state statute.
I'm sorry to ask all the question. I want to be sure I fully understood it. Thank you very much.
Any further questions or comments? If not, I think I need a motion.
Move, I move.
I thought it already happened.
I don't think we did.
No, we have to have an official action.
I'll make a motion to accept this process.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, the vote is up. Motion carries five one. All right, we have future meetings and events. May 22nd, tomorrow, last day of school. Teachers are jumping up and down. That's right.
This has been a long...
May 25th to June 20th, Summer School Session One. No school offices closed on May 28th, Memorial Day. We have a board work session on June 11th at 5:30, and our next board meeting will be June 25th at 5:30 PM.
We do need to make sure going into executive session, we also add 14 under the Sunshine Law, items protected by law.
I make a motion to move to executive session. Pursue it to 610.021. Close meetings and close records for 1, 3, and 14.
No motion and a second. All right. Motion carries six oh.
We would like to move into executive session. We do have some people out here waiting.